Working on it.
Will you check to see if we made this meeting?
Oh, yeah.
I think I should have been.
So far.
Yes, we should.
So this must be my...
Unless I'm really irritating to you, I'd rather stay where we are.
Oh, no, no, that's fine. I was thinking the same thing. So we can have a legal conversation.
Hey, we speak them openly.
Yeah, we do.
And by the way, when it's baseball season, it's okay to have the scores on your phone.
No kidding?
Yeah.
I mean, they're...I can disclose it.
Hello, Paul.
I can disclose it.
Yeah. You're not making any money off it. You're not personally enriching...well, you're enriching your life.
I'm good, how are you?
Oh, God.
Good.
No, I'm fine. It's taken a couple of weeks.
It looks shorter.
Hey.
I just looked at them and I'm now blind.
You're looking good.
Well, thank you.
How are you, Beth? How was your...all of the stuff you've had to do?
Good.
Good. Okay. Yes. It's on this new one, yes. Oh, oh, okay. Yes, I signed it on the list. Welcome, council. We're all here and we recognize that this is the final meeting on the dais with John Pitt. We're glad you're healthy and you're looking good.
Thank you.
We have so much appreciated these...for me, poor years, for others, they've spent more time with you here and we really appreciate you.
Well, thank you, Mayor.
John, thank you. We also began at 6:00 PM with a work session of the city council that's held in the planning room over here just on the north...yeah, the northwest corner of the building. And we were privileged to have our representative Ray Ward there today to look at the legislative session that's coming up. We will begin by having the pledge of allegiance and we've asked Landon Stevens if he would come forth here and give us a pledge of allegiance. And then we'll ask Millie Barr, one of our wonderful residents here in Bountiful, to offer a word of prayer. Okay, thanks, Landon.
Will the audience move their eyes? Will you please draw via the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dear heavenly Father, we are indeed grateful for this opportunity we have to gather as friends and neighbors. We're grateful for our city and for our country and for the freedoms and blessings it affords us. We're grateful for the men and women who are willing to serve our city and ask that thou would bless them in all that they do on our behalf. Please bless those men and women who are serving our country, keep them safe, and bring them home to their families. Again, we're grateful for the many blessings that we enjoy and we say these things in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank both of you for your help. We will now turn some time over to Shawna.
Oh, are we going out of order in the agenda?
Yes.
Thank you. If you'd raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear...
I solemnly swear...
That I will support, obey, and defend...
That I will support, obey, and defend...
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of Utah...
And the Constitution of the State of Utah...
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity...
And I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Awesome. Congratulations.
Welcome, Chris, to the city council. We're so glad to have you with us. We all look a little bit like we're going to a funeral today. I've never seen us look so suit-driven, but I think it's a good way to start the year. And so we'll proceed with our agenda.
Mr. Mayor, would you grant me one privilege for a moment?
Yes, I would.
Before Mr. Pitt leaves.
Absolutely.
John, don't go anywhere yet. I just want to say in this meeting, before you and your beautiful wife walk away, how much I appreciate your love of Bountiful and your years of service and the quality of individual that you are. And during the last year, there have been times when people have called into question your motives and your capabilities and et cetera, et cetera, and we don't have any doubts. We love you and thank you for your service.
Yeah, thanks, John.
I'd just like to make a comment. I understand that we are honoring you, Councilman Pitt, at the next meeting, but I still just want to take this opportunity to just let you know what a good friend you have been. And I just...what I really appreciate about John Pitt is that if we're discussing an issue, if there's ever a question about whether or not something should get more public input, he's always going to be on that side. And he is such a champion for local business and just a man of integrity. And so it's just been such an honor. And I know we're going to say more about you next time, but I like Richard. I just didn't want you to leave without you knowing that it's been such a pleasure, such an honor to work with you.
Thank you. The president's been online.
Good. And we're going to make sure that we hear from you when we meet the next time.
And Wendy.
And Wendy. You're good. I'm glad that you remember.
Just bear warning.
Yes, Wendy, we want you to come with him. Thank you. All right.
Well, thank you and congratulations. Particularly with Richard and Chris, it's great to have...yeah, I can't even anybody would rather have taking that seat.
Mayor, may I just say these are huge shoes to fill. I feel quite responsibility trying to step in after John Pitt. Thank you.
Wonderful.
You did a great job. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will now look at having our public comment time, which is a maximum of 10 minutes and individually, it's a maximum of two minutes. And anyone that is willing and wanting to come to the podium here and express themselves about something that they have in their...on their mind about Bountiful, we would invite you now to step forward.
Gary Davis, 2814 South, 500 West.
Do you want to speak into that, Mike, a little bit there if you would? Thanks, Gary.
Gary Davis, 2814 South, 500 West. A few questions, comments about the notes for today, page eight of the expenditure report for parks improvement other than buildings, $421,000 from travelers casualty. I'm wondering, is that landscaping or what are they going to do other than buildings? Again, golf course, $1,300 for more golf balls. Wow. Charlotte, North Carolina, in the middle of November? I don't know about that. What else have we got here? Also for Creekside Park, another $5,900 from a company that specializes in building buildings for something improvements other than buildings? More landscaping, I guess. And on page 11, got a question about the travel and training. There are four different things on there. The first one's travel and training. Next one's travel, training, and park equipment. Officer training and a cell phone, travel, train, and equipment rentals. Are we lumping travel stuff in with the equipment purchases and/or rentals? I don't know. Interlocal agreement, paragraph two, termination. You got a blank spot in there. Is this a legal document? Is it supposed to be blank spots that filled in later by somebody else? On page 30 of the interlocal agreement, I guess captions are really important because you got it in there twice. That's all I got. Everybody stay safe.
Yep. Thank you, Gary. And we will, again, we will submit you to visit with our staff concerning those things. Thank you. Any others?
Hello. My name is Clint Halliday. My address is 371 South, 1300 East, just right above Oak Hills Elementary School. As I assume you know, I ran for city council in this past election. I am brand-new to Bountiful. I've lived here for about two years. This May, it'll be two years. My wife is very excited to be back in Bountiful. My son is loving the school. And if Oak Hills is any indication, he'll have a great time up at junior high and high school. I wanted to step forward and just express my sincere desire to serve Bountiful and our community. And if you ever have needs for a volunteer, for any board members handing out name tags at events, please consider me. And most importantly, let's have a wonderful year and thank you very much and have a good evening.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Thanks, Clint.
My pleasure.
And any others? Okay, with that, we will end the public comment period. Thank you. And I'll look for a motion on approval of the minutes. Any corrections or additions first, I would ask?
Mr. Mayor, I didn't see any corrections that I found necessary and I'd be happy to move that we approve them as printed.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is passed and we will look for a report from the youth council.
Yes.
Thank you, Kendal.
Thanks. I'd like to ask Olivia and Gabe to come up from the youth council. There are representatives here today. They'll just give us an update of what the youth council is doing.
So, first of all, we had a pretty great Christmas party. It's pretty great. You guys all probably wish you were there right now. And right now, we're doing a service project. We're making blankets for a hospital and we're like midway through that service project and we've got to still deliver them to the hospital. But, yeah, we're doing lots of good stuff in there.
Thank you.
We're also looking forward to a leadership conference where some of the members of the youth council will be going to USU in March.
That's way good.
I want to thank Gabe and Olivia for coming tonight and giving us that report. And they're two awesome members of our youth council and you guys are awesome. Thank you so much for coming.
Kendal, maybe you can remind people how many people, young people, we have on that youth council.
We have 60 youth council members and they are the best. They do...they have so much energy and do so much good. It's great.
Thank you. And we'll have council reports and why don't we just stay right down there? We'll start with you, Kendal.
I don't have anything to report. Thanks, Mayor.
Okay. And I was going to say John, but I'm going to definitely say Chris.
Mayor, I am so new, I have nothing to report, but I am here.
Thank you. And Beth?
I don't have anything this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. And maybe for the knowledge of everyone, Beth represents the...being the president of the Utah League of Cities and Towns, that means she has a huge responsibility over 247 of our cities and towns in Utah and we're really proud of her because that is a huge responsibility. Thank you, Beth.
Thank you.
She had a lot of responsibilities just this week on new officials' training and that was done very, very well.
Newly elected, yes. We're sorry we missed her.
John Mark?
I would just like to acknowledge that today is law enforcement recognition day, so thank you for everything you do.
Amen to that. And Sir Richard?
Nothing to report today. Thank you.
Thank you. I hope that we've all had a chance to look at our weekly expenditures of greater than $1,000 paid on December 4th, 11th, 18th, and 25th of 2017. And also the November 2017 financial report. There any, again, questions or comments from the council? If not, I'll look for a motion.
Move to approve them as printed.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kendal. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And that passes. Okay, I think we're looking now, Gary, for something here on the screen.
Pending. It's coming. Okay.
Oh, there we go. This graph here, not so much a graph, is just an assignment sheet for the city council and the mayor of all the budget committees that were on as well as the liaison responsibilities that we have. And we have, as you look, this has already been looked at by all of the city council and myself. And now we're just looking to approve all of them at once for those assignments. So I would look for...and there are a couple, let's see, there's quite a few changes that we have on there. And as you see, on the budget committees of the city, each one of the council has a chair position with two other council members. And in many cases, it's someone that is different than another place so that we just...we get to work with all the council over time. Any questions?
None.
I'll look for a motion from the...
Mr. Mayor, move to approve. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, we will move forward. Thank you. We're going to turn some time now over to Gary Hill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Tonight, this item is relative to impact fees. When South Davis Metro Fire was created, most recently into a district, the district was authorized to impose impact fees for fire apparatus. That's a fee that's paid by development to help defray the cost that the new development causes for infrastructure-related needs. And so a fee is paid at the time of building permit typically. And the fire district of which Bountiful's a part has imposed the fee. This interlocal agreement is between ourselves and the fire district to calculate that fee at the time of building permit and then to remit the...collect and remit those fees to the fire district. Bountiful has not had a fire impact fee in the past, but now that we're part of the district, we'll be collecting that on their behalf. Be happy to answer any other questions. I may just simply note that the agreement that was referred to by Mr. Davis in the packet, as you know, was a draft. The paragraph in question is paragraph eight and then the extraneous paragraph has been deleted and been renumbered, but there are no substantive changes. So staff would simply recommend that you adopt the interlocal agreement as with the amendments explained. Happy to answer any questions.
With no questions, I'll look for a motion from the council. Hello? Hello? A motion to approve? Do I have a motion?
Come on, Chris.
I was waiting for you.
Thank you. I move that we approve the agreement for the South Davis Metro Fire collection fee impact that Gary Hill has so eloquently given to us.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Good. Thank you.
That wasn't too painful, was it?
Chris, it was not painful. You did a great job. Thank you. That's your first one.
Just for the record, it was painful.
It was painful. Well, you'll have a lot of those in the future.
Next time, you can bring a companion animal, Chris.
Oh, we get it. Inside. And the tenth item is...Mark, do we have Mark Slagowski here?
I'll be doing that one.
Oh, you're going to take care of that one? Thanks, Mark. Thanks, Paul.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, included in this year's water budget was the replacement, is the replacement, of the control panels for two of our water pumping stations. The Upper Williams Pump Station, which services all of the area of Maple Hills and Cave Hollow up into Stone Ridge, it services a lot of area. And the 3100 South Pump Station, which services pretty much all of Bountiful, south and east of 3100 South and 4th East. These are two fairly important pump stations. They've now made it to an age at which the electronics have not only aged, but have become outdated and the water department anticipated replacing those control panels. They solicited and received...they solicited from three vendors proposals to do that work and received two proposals back with Electro Power Utah being the lower proposal at $60,260. By the way, I believe the water department budgeted $65,000 for this work, so it's a little bit under what was budgeted. The water department is very familiar with Electro Power Utah's work and are anxious to work with them on these two projects and come with the recommendation that the council approve the contract with Electro Power Utah for the replacement of these electrical panels at these pump stations in the amount of $60,260. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to go on way too long again.
So I have a question and I'm just not experienced with this kind of thing, so maybe you could help explain. So would it ever work to take like a part of the bid and a part of the other bid? Like see in this case how it's more expensive for one and it's less expensive for the other, but then overall, it's less expensive with the bid we're going with?
We'd have to cut them up. We'd have to rebid them and we don't know what we'd get. We wouldn't want to do that. And the vendors would certainly not want us to do that to either one of them, so...
The vendors typically set that up so that they can have structure it the way that they make money best, however that is, so...
They probably would not be anxious to split them up and keep these same numbers.
There are times when the city will bid projects or equipment to different vendors. It makes sense to split it, things like that. I think with this particular product, it didn't, but it's a great question. And you'll see that occasionally where we will split bids for that purpose to try and get that have different large components.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the bid from Electro Power Utah for the total amount of $60,260 to build new control panels for our hydroelectric facilities as presented by staff.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion also passes. Before we adjourn, we're going to have Gary have a couple of items that he just needs to talk about.
Thanks. Neither one of these requires any council action. One is just for information and I probably should have pointed it out before, but we are still beta-testing our streaming capabilities. You may notice the lovely temporary camera here. This will be the second meeting that...
I thought that was just to keep us from shoplifting.
Well, it might apply to some more than others.
No, he's responsible for the shoplifting.
Oh, okay, that's right.
So we've been in the process of testing that and connecting that with the sound system and things over the last couple of meetings. We'll continue to do that until we get the camera angles and things the way we want it to be before we broadcast, but much appreciation to...is Rex here? Thanks, Rex. He spent quite a bit of time trying to get this to work. You'll notice the large amount of wirework that has gone into this that's spread around the room till we come with the final solution, but I want to especially recognize him for that. So, once we're ready to go, we'll be broadcasting maybe a meeting or so, but we're...so far, the results look pretty good.
Maybe this is why we all wore suits and...
Maybe so.
And our best outfits.
So... And then...oh, sorry.
No.
So I just want to make you aware of that. The second item was just one where we need some direction.
Before we move on from that, I just wanted to note that the camera is pointed at Councilman Higginson right now.
Oh, good.
Yeah. The best part is we had to put some anti-glare tape on the bottom of that for...well, really for me.
Oh.
There's the glare off the bottom of the camera and so it's angled in such a way that...
I thought it was pointed here because it centers on mass. Okay.
Councilman Simonson is like, woo, this is a tough crowd.
Yeah. Item number two, really quickly, is there's been a discussion and a request with some of you on the council about technological needs. I know that most of us carry something like this. Not everybody does, but almost everybody I know does these days. Most of us have multiple email accounts, multiple phone numbers. In addition to that, with the boards and commissions that you sit on, you also receive emails from multiple bodies and it can be cumbersome. The question is if the council would like to look into a technological solution to hopefully make it a little bit easier for you. The question was asked about providing tablets for the council. And so Clint and I and Alan in the IT department looked at that and there's a couple ways to go about that. One would be simply providing you with a tablet each, but a recommendation I might suggest instead of that is that there be a stipend that's once per term where you can get the piece of equipment that best suits your needs as opposed to a specific tablet because the problematic piece of a tablet is it becomes obsolete. But also, if it's something that's provided by the city, it's property of the city and then what do you do with it at the end of your term? At that point, is it obsolete? You try to buy it back. It might simply be easier to do sort of a stipend per term that would cover the cost of that. So as we've looked at cost, something along the lines of about $450 once every four years. I know, get really excited. But that would cover the cost of a device that you could use. Is...just looking for a direction on council, if that's something you want us to pursue, something that is...the money's available and budgeted and then we could work with you individually on that?
I'd rather have somebody provided to respond to emails for me.
I don't think you can get that for $450 for years.
Probably not.
I'm just going to go on and let you say that. I actually think it's probably a pretty good idea in terms of the stipend portion because you're right, the obsoleteness and the challenges that that presents can get a little cumbersome at times, so it is a bit of a challenge to... So, um, I, it is, it is a bit of a challenge to, um, to certainly... It's a lot easier if you have a larger device than this, so, yeah.
Seen a few hits, nod.
Mm-hmm. I've, I've had two or three of the council people have said those kinds of things to me, so.
Okay. So we'll just, any, any, John Mark or Richard or any other comments?
I don't have strong feelings either way. If the other, other council members are in favor of it, I'm, I'm ambivalent.
Okay.
Or clueless.
We, we, we would still need to present this as a, as...
No, no actions necessary because the funds are already budgeted. It's just a question of, is there a device provided or is it a stipend? And seems like the preference is that it be a stipend so you can get what you, what works best for you.
Well, and I think that the details that you talked about of returning to the city and clearing personal information off and whatever else might be cumbersome.
Yeah, there is that whole fact of, yeah, uh, it being city equipment. And this way, it, it just, it's a lot more convenient. Clint, anything to add there?
No. Not a legal comment, but a lot of that cost will be made up with no more printing of these. You can access them on there, I guess.
We would continue to print them.
Oh, give it to them at the...
If you, if, if you want them, so. Yeah. Some of us, I know some of you prefer and some of me prefer having a hard copy. But, uh, so. That's it. I think I got the direction I needed.
We're going to adjourn in one minute, but I, I would like to, I would like to address, uh, the council as well as, uh, the, the, the group that is here, which we appreciate so much that you've come and we have lots of scouts out there today. We appreciate that so many of you too, that you just look sharp. You've come in your uniforms. Some of you don't have time to come in your uniforms. We're just, we're number one, happy to have you here. And this past year was an election year. And I heard it several times through my work in the county and even sometimes down with the city that, uh, it was pretty unusual for, uh, the strength of, of, uh, difficulty that, uh, happened to be, uh, in Bountiful with the election, with the opinions and the feelings and sometimes the extra strong feelings, uh, that came about because of that. And I just want, I, I want everyone to know that my only goal for this year 2018 is to make sure that what has, I think, occurred over the last couple of months continues where we, we can take a deep breath of appreciation for where we live and appreciation for a wonderful council that we've had for four years. And now with Chris, we have, we have a council of really intelligent people who have just given their time to serve you. Because really the purpose of Bountiful City is to serve the residents. That's, and provide services for each of your homes. That's what I talk about when I have the scouts here. I ask them, you know, why, why do we exist? One, because community is really important to us all. And in Bountiful, I think it exists more than normal. Now, aren't you proud anytime you tell people that you're from Bountiful? I mean, and people always, always, no matter where I go, they go, oh, Bountiful, that is a great city. So an appreciation of where we live, the feelings that we have, our families, amazing amount of families that come back to want to live in Bountiful. So it's, I, I think it's just so important. And, and I would, I would love it if those who are here would speak to your neighbors, uh, to know that the mayor of Bountiful, his number one goal this year is that we all take care of one another, be good neighbors. Uh, certainly, I think that this council del, deserves a great deal of trust. But, we want you to be involved. We want you to listen what the budget is and we want people to participate. And that's a really important things to us. Those who excoriate, uh, the government and, and criticize all those, those kinds of things, sometimes it just gets in our soul and it kind of rankers us. And I think we've all taken that deep breath of refreshment of just an appreciation for being here and remembering how many things that the city also provides. The staff, who we have nearly 300, do we have with our part-time about 300 employees, Gary? These folks, they're the ones that on Christmas came out and they plowed your roads. You see the police wherever we go. Last four years, we, s- serious crime in Bountiful's gone down by 30 percent. I mean, we really have, almost every, every category in the police department has gone down in arrests and so forth and we've talked about that. We, uh, i- i- if you get, if you get sick or you're in an emergency, well, your, your taxes just went up from the fire department. But they went up to reduce the amount of time that it takes for people to get there from six minutes to four minutes. And that four minutes will save one of your lives or the, one of the lives of people that you love. Those are the decisions that have to be made on a local level and we, we do our best to get your feedback. In fact, we've, we've been, we have now invested in Qualtrics and some other things and I'm sure you've seen it, where we will have better communication in the future. But when you get your power and when you get your water and when you get the gas and when your garbage is picked up, uh, and several other services, that's the reason we exist as a community. This is what Bountiful City does. And it's what I talked to the scouts about and it's important. But my one, number one goal is that we feel better with each other and we feel better with this city than we, than we have certainly during this last year. And I, that's all I have to say. We, we don't need to, to perpetuate the meeting, but also if there's any, if there's anything to be said at the beginning of this year, this is our first meeting. And I'll just tell you, I love being the mayor of this city. Yeah, I'm learning. I, I've learned along the way. Uh, but I, I love it. I, I'm, I'm proud to be from Bountiful. And anything, anything that anybody else has to say, you're, you're welcome to do it. But let's just go forth and be kind to each other and be careful about what we say about each other so that we, we can do things in a civil way and come and be involved with us here. Uh, motion to adjourn? Motion for Randy to be quiet?
Never, never. But I'll make a motion to adjourn if nobody has anything else they want to say.
Can I just make a comment, Mayor?
Sure.
I hope each one of you out there, young men, scouts, will seriously think about as you get older, participating in the city that you live in, participating in making the city better. We moved here to raise our family and we moved here so I could have a practice and we moved here because we love this city. I have a lot of things on my plate, as my wife reminds me constantly, but it was a priority to me to sit on this council, to keep this city, in my opinion, the finest city to raise a family and to grow old in. So I thank those that supported me. I thank the council that guided me. And I thank a few individuals out there, and I won't name you, but I'm looking at you, who gave me encouragement. Thank you and I'll do all I can do to keep this city, as Paragon Session said, the finest city in Utah to live and raise a family. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Chris. Uh, did, did we get a motion?
Indeed.
We did? And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are all adjourned. You're adjourned, we're adjourned.
Okay, halfway between.
Okay, but I'm gonna say, you want to add the girls to that, not just... Forget the girls.
Okay. Thanks. That's great.
I'm speaking at the Real Limit Run this weekend.